Good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our February 27th, 2023 City Council meeting to order. Welcome those who are joining us in the audience and those who are joining us live via TV. At this time, we will prepare for the invocation. Pastor Bryce, Cameron Bryce, is he here? If not, we'll move, ask Minister DJ Hare, also Councilmember Hare, if he would give us our invocation. If we could please stand for the prayer, immediately following which, repeat the pledge of allegiance in unison.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear Lord Jesus, thank you once again for just allowing us to bow our heads and say thank you. Thank you, Lord, for a great day, for a great week. We thank you, Lord, for taking care of our bodies and our families and our homes and protecting them from the enemy. Lord, as we go about doing the city of Fayetteville business tonight, as we go through all of our agenda items, Father, I ask you to allow each council member's mind to be open as we move forward in doing the business of the city. We ask you, Father, also for protection tonight, that we have a smooth meeting with no interruptions. In all of these things, dear Lord, we ask in your Son, Jesus Christ's name, Jesus the Christ, amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral. Thank you, Councilmember Hare. Counselor, at this time, as we move to announcements and recognitions, I'll go to Councilmember Hare.
Thank you again, Mayor, and good evening to everyone. I would like to take this opportunity with some of my colleagues and our staff, Fayette State University, and invite as many as possible to our March 2nd, Merkison Road Corridor Presentations Update. Business owners, business owners, community residents, whomever would like to come, we would love to have you here in City Council chambers on March the 2nd, 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. There will also be an opportunity for questions and answers, a Q&amp;A opportunity. So, we would love to see you this week for a Merkison Road Corridor Progress Report Updates, things along that line. We would love to see you. And Mayor, thank you for that. And also, I would just like to take this opportunity first to thank the Lord that February is finally coming to an end and say happy wedding anniversary today, the 27th, to my dear, dear wife. So, baby, happy, happy wedding anniversary. Every time I'm in front of the mic, I have to give her a shout out this month. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Happy anniversary to you and your wife. I think you messed it up when you said you're glad the month's coming to an end. So, all right, we'll see when you get home. All right, Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to talk to, so everybody will know this, today, Mayor Protem and I had the privilege of being at Methodist University today where they have announced that they will have an MD program and they are partnering with Cape Fear Valley Hospital. So, that is a huge asset to our city, to our county, and to our region, just to go show how we are trying to collaborate as a region to move things forward. And of course, my thing that I had to quote was, "It's going to be really nice to see some green and gold in the middle of town."
All right, yeah, congratulations, Dr. Ward and Mike Nagowski, for the announcement of a new medical school here in Fayetteville, North Carolina. Sixth medical school, I think? So, congratulations. Look forward to great things. All right, any other announcements, Councilmembers? Councilmember Benevente?
Just very briefly, our E. Smith Golden Bulls, boys' basketball and women's basketball, are both in the quarterfinals for the state championship. They both achieved the conference championship, they both won the conference tournament, and now they're hopefully going to take home their entire conference for the state tournament. So, shout out to the Golden Bulls, both the boys' and the girls' teams. I'm looking forward to celebrating with them once they get done Tuesday, the quarterfinals, and hopefully they'll be in the finals after that.
Thank you, absolutely. Go Bulls. All right, any other announcements, Counsel? All right, if seen none, moving to City Manager's Report. Mr. Manager, all right. Counsel, moving to the approval of the agenda, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Mahandros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we amend the agenda to add item 7.020, rescission of the demolition ordinance for 1416 Coley Drive, and authorizing the city to enter into a repair agreement with the owner.
I'll second that motion.
Wasn't finished, but okay, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor, but right now, we just need to get the item on the agenda and then his second part.
Yeah, I wanted him to at least finish his thought, so.
Right, because that's really, once we get the item on the agenda, his part that he was authorizing us to do.
Okay, I didn't even get the word authorized. I just, okay, so can you repeat without interruption, Mr. Mahandros, what you're saying? What is your motion, sir?
I move that we amend the agenda to include 7.020, rescission of the demolition ordinance for 1460 Coley Drive, and 9.02, discussion of the PWC appointment.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Mahandros, seconded by Mayor Protem Dawkins to amend the, approve the agenda with the following amendments.
And I have a friendly amendment, Mr. Mayor, based on our folks here tonight, if you would allow that 8.0 move to 9.0 and 9.0, the public hearing go before the staff reports. Just a timing issue because we've got a large crowd.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just to recap that, I heard the motion to add the items to the agenda was also a motion and a friendly amendment accepted by Councilmember Mahandros to change the public hearing with the two staff reports. Is that right?
Just flip it, just move.
Just exchange places.
Front of the staff report.
Okay, all right. All right, Counsel, any questions on the motion on the floor? All right, Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important that before we amend the agenda to reintroduce the PWC appointment process, or appointment option, that we establish a very specific process, whether we establish a runoff process and exactly what we'll do if there's another stalemate.
Councilmember Benevente, city attorney's looking over her glasses, saying that we will get into the merits of the item, so if you can kind of keep it pertaining to the motion without getting too deep into the merits, because we haven't authorized to be able to discuss.
Your rules for adding items to the agenda don't allow for discussion.
No, of course not. All right, so my mistake. All right, Counsel, seeing that, look to you for your.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I did have discussion on the motion. I believe I heard discussion of PWC appointment. Should that be appointment of PWC Commissioner?
Can you clarify your motion, sir?
Well, to Councilmember Benevente and Councilmember Ingram's point, if we added that to the, added the discussion of the PWC appointment to the agenda, I was hoping we could discuss that then.
Okay, all right.
If so, inclined.
Sure. All right, Counsel, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Mahandros, seconded by Mayor Protem Dawkins to amend the agenda with the following, to approve the agenda with the following amendments. Look to you for your votes. Everybody on the... All right, motion carries, 9-1. Those voting opposed, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. All right, is that Benevente? Okay. Look, we need to monitor the faces. My eyes are already struggling. All right, thank you. Sorry, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. Madam Clerk, let the record reflect, I had that wrong. Benevente is the opposing. Okay, all right. All right, moving to consent. Item 7.0, is there a motion to approve consent?
I'll second.
All right, this is a motion by Councilmember Jensen to approve 7.0, seconded by Mayor Protem. Discussion on the motion for consent. All right, Counsel, look to you for your votes. All right, show of hands, those in favor of the consent? All right, all right. Okay, motion carries. Yeah, it's too low to see. All right, motion carries. All right, Counsel, moving to... The public hearing has been changed for the staff report, correct?
So, now we're going to the public hearing?
Yes, all right. Yes, sir.
I was just wondering, has it popped up here just for a second? Is it in any way possible that our votes will pop on our monitor? Because he was saying that he couldn't see it, and it was here just for a second, on these monitors. That would be probably be better than.
All right, so I guess they'll work on that. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each unless by a previous arrangement, a single spokesperson is designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, clearly state your name and address for the record, and then begin to address the city council. When the light changes from green to amber, or you'll be notified when you have thirty seconds remaining, at the end of your allotted time, you'll be notified that your time has expired. With that, we will turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This is case P-2248 for a property located on Rim Road. Close reference would be the end of April Drive, as it is currently an undeveloped property. It does not have an address, and it is located in District 7. The request is to go from MR, excuse me, SF6 to MR5, conditional zoning district. This shows the subject property here, again at the corner of Rim Road and Clifdale Road. Not sure how well you can see the mouse, but for reference, this is the Food Lion Shopping Center, and this is the existing Colony Village subdivision here. Again, subject property is currently zoned SF6, as well as the property to the north, and some of the property to the west. Additionally, there is SF10 to the north, and then the orange shows the five parcels that are already currently zoned MR5. Future land use plan is calling for this area to develop as medium-density residential, which does allow for apartments as well as single-family development. This is an image of the property from the end of April Drive. As you can see, it's currently vacant and undeveloped. The road that you see there goes to a PWC well site, or excuse me, aqua well site. Again, the subdivisions to the west and to the north, and the undeveloped land to the south. The two conditions offered by the applicant at this time are to limit the number of units to seventy-two units on this 12.23-acre site, as well as a twenty-foot-wide type-A buffer along the northern and western property lines adjacent to those existing subdivisions. This item did go to zoning commission, and they did recommend approval. Staff is also recommending approval of the rezoning. Here are your options. Counsel can choose to approve as presented. They could choose to approve with added conditions that the owner and applicant agrees upon. They could approve to a more restrictive zoning district, and then, of course, you could potentially deny the rezoning. Staff will ask the holding questions until after the public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. So, with that, we'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
We have fifteen speakers signed up for this item. Our first speaker is Ms. Lisa Lundine. Okay. Do I need to read them? Okay, I need to read all of the speakers that have signed up. Ms. Lisa Lundine, Mr. Lofti Smith. Mr. Jonathan Charleston, Mr. Chuck Maxwell, Mr. Joe Gillis, Suzanne Gillis, David Gillis, John Gillis, Dorothy Gillis, Shayna Eddings, Jordan Veal, Victoria Jones, Cynthia Crowe-Bath, Crystal Williams, and Jayden Crowe-Bath. So, could all of you confirm that you concede your time to Mr. Jonathan Charleston? Okay, thank you.
My name is Jonathan Charleston, and my address is 201 Hay Street, Fayetteville, North Carolina. And I'm going to be very brief. What I'm having circulate today is a proposed site plan. I just want to show members of counsel essentially what we're looking to have done. Once this site plan gets around to you, this property is already zoned to support medium-density multifamily. The difference in what we're trying to do is to align the zoning for the property that we're here tonight, asking for your firm to vote. We want to align that property with the property that's also owned by the developer, and that would be part of the project in the front of the site. We want it to have the same zoning classification, and here's why. The property in the back is situated in a way that it will support eighty-eight units, but each unit, it will only support, allow for four units per building. So, to build a property out in the way that the property is designed for, would cause us to have to put twenty-two buildings on that site versus the three buildings that we're looking to put on the site with twenty-three units per building. Essentially, what we're looking to do is to limit the number of units on that site to seventy-two units versus the eighty-eight units that could be put on the site as is, without any rezoning. And the whole idea is to have less density by putting twenty-two buildings on the site and have the entire development be uniform. So, there will not be, we're not asking counsel to allow additional development beyond what could be put on the site right now. In fact, what we're asking is to limit that development from the eighty-eight units to seventy-two units, and the only thing that, the benefit that it would be to the developer, is the developer then gets to put the three units on the site, three buildings, with, I think it's twenty-two units within each building. And so, again, we're not asking for the opportunity to put additional units on the site. In fact, we're putting fewer units on the site, which would be, which will mean less traffic. I know that was a concern, less traffic, less units. So, I'll pause here, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want to retread what, what staff has already mentioned, and I'd like to reserve the remainder of my time for any questions or rebuttal, if anybody has some. In the meantime, the folks that are here in support of this project, if you could just stand up so we can see where everybody is. Thank you. Thank you very much. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll just reserve the balance of my time.
All right, any questions for Mr. Charleston or staff? Yeah, any questions? All right, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin.
Mr. Mayor, typically, we make, allow the speakers to speak, so if there's some opposition, and then you guys would go to the question.
Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, you're correct. Did you have any opposed on us?
No, sir. We have no further speakers.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, I'll leave the public hearing open until you ask your question.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Charleston, I do have a question. I know we have Bone Creek subdivision. There have been numerous complaints about the traffic off of Clifdale Road. With these, the seventeen, well, seventy-two unit, will they be entering or exiting off Clifdale, or will they be Rim Road?
It will not be Clifdale. Is that correct? It will not be Clifdale.
It won't be Clifdale? Okay. I have another question. Do we have somebody from our staff here?
I think the traffic engineer.
No?
Because there, or the young lady who opened the item.
Heather Eckhart.
Ms. Eckhart, I'm sorry.
Yeah, what was your question, ma'am?
Well, the question was, again, with the, with the traffic, common devices, would there be a major impact to Clifdale Road?
Traffic engineer lives here tonight, or possibly Mr. Jernigan with Traffic Services.
Okay, well, Mr. Jernigan. And I bring this up to, I do support building in the area. I do know that we do have a shortage of housing, so this is a great opportunity, but I just wanted to, because I know individuals have issues with traffic, so I just want to make sure when we're supporting building different units, that we want to make sure that people are able to enter, and just basically just focus on making sure that the traffic is not as bad as it already is. So, I just want to just make sure that we consider that.
Yeah, good evening, Counsel. As Mr. Charleston mentioned, by lowering the amount of units on the site than what it could be, that would lower the amount of traffic that the site would generate. So, from that perspective, that's a benefit. Just for everyone's information, Rim Road and Clifdale Road are both owned by NC DOT, so they ultimately will make decisions on what the access will be. But as Mr. Charleston mentioned, the access will be directly to Rim Road and not to Clifdale Road.
Okay, well, thank you. And this, the mailouts were to over a hundred, with a hundred and thirty-one residents that received this, so no one was in opposition from the public hearing, correct?
I'll ask Heather if she could speak to that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions, comments? All right, so with that, I'll close the public hearing. Look to you for action, Counsel. Councilmember McNair.
Yes, sir. I make a motion that we approve to be no more than a city to apartment units located at Zero Drive off Rim Road.
Second.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember McNair, seconded by Councilmember Ingram to approve the following with the conditions as stated. Discussion on the motion. Seen none, Counsel, I'll look to you for action. All right, motion carries. Good luck to you all. Thank you for joining us this evening. All right, moving along to staff reports. Item 8.01, Chief Hill, Fayette Fire Department, fourth quarter review. How are you, sir?
All right, it's great to be here. Thank you for the opportunity to close out another year. Have a ritual at my house every night. I get home, my wife asks me, "How was your day at work?" I have two responses. "It was really good," or "It was all right." So, if you ask me how 2022 was for us, I'm going to say it was all right. It, some really good things happened in 2022. We were blessed in a lot of ways, but for us, 2022 will always be marred with the loss of Battalion Chief John Bowen. We lose people every year, but it was a little bit different. It hurt a little worse this year, and I'm confident when the state finishes their processes that his passing will be classified as a line-of-duty death. And that's significant for us, because that will only be the fourth line-of-duty death in the history of our department that's been documented. We've been around since 1791, you know? So, when that happens, 2022 will literally be etched in stone. It'll be engraved in brass. It'll be mentioned in memorial services for, you know, for generations. So, you know, significant for us. But life goes on. We learn from our tragedies. But I think probably more important than what we learn from our tragedies is the changes we make. I think that defines our legacy as leaders, is, you know, how we act on what we learn. But knowing the hazards, your firefighters come to work every day to ensure that we realize we're a safe and secure community that's resilient against all hazards. We didn't change any goals for our fire department from last year coming this year. We adjusted some of our objectives, but our strategic goals still pertain to our emergency response, one on our people and our firefighters, and one focused on our prevention and preparatory efforts for the community. Fire department is still organized in three branches, one assigned with a goal, and one overseen by deputy chief, and they'll be coming up here in just a few minutes to talk about their divisional experiences from 2022. Before they do, there's a few points that I want to make from a high level, because I don't want us to miss things in their presentation. Number one, our biggest nemesis for 2022 revolves around our recruitment and retention. For four years, I've stood up here and told you that we have vacancies, but not worry about it. We got a list, and we'll be able to backfill firefighters. I'm telling you, things have changed. Record-high attrition, record-low number of applicants. We're experiencing vacancies faster than we can fill them in the fire department. I'm worried, and I'm telling you, you should probably be worried about it. We've got to get ahead of it. We've got to make an investment in our firefighters to be able to retain that talent. If not, we're going to continue to be a training ground for those that are willing to invest in it. From a fire condition standpoint, we know last spring was a little dry, a little windy, a few more modeling-type fires, but for the rest of the metrics we track from our fires, you'll see that's basically flatlined, not a lot of variation from what we normally experience. EMS continues to be our most popular service by demand. We did see a pretty significant increase in cardiac arrest and overdoses, and they are related. From our technical programs, rescue hazmat, airport, nothing really outstanding in the programs itself. We did get some new leadership through some promotions and personnel assignments. Really excited about that. I feel like comprehensively, we have the best leadership team in our operations division we've had in my... we've had in my entire tenure with the fire department. Quick update on Station Four, still on schedule. We should be transitioning any time now from horizontal construction to vertical construction. We're still looking at a completion date late fall. Next to recruitment and retention, you know, the condition of some of our age facilities seems to be, you know, our biggest challenge. Thank you for your support for the GO bond. Thank you to the community to support the passengers, because that's gonna really help us jumpstart a couple of these projects. Recognizing that we have increased experience with cardiac arrest, we kicked off our hands-on CPR program, it's been mildly successful. We're gonna double down on the efforts for that this year, so you'll see some new initiatives coming out with that. And keep in mind, we changed record management systems last year after twenty-five years with the legacy system. We have the functionality and capability to do things today that we haven't been able to do in the past. The trade-off is the reporting is a little bit different. So we're doing trend analysis. When we're giving some of these reports, some of the data may look a little skewed, but just keep in mind, we don't measure things exactly the same way today as we did yesterday. If you're here, remember just a minute, the fire department is a family. Not only does it consist of our three hundred fifty-one employees, we have a hundred and fifty retirees that we support at all times. We have our own culture, we have a brother and sisterhood, unlike you'll see in any other institution. We lost seven members of our family last year. And I'm not going to go through each one individually, but I think it's important that we remember the sacrifices that they made. The one thing that all these individuals had in common, other than the patch they wore on their sleeve like mine, is they all had serious medical conditions that science says was attributed to their careers as firefighters. We know firefighting is dangerous, we hear that from the time we're kids, but statistically, it's not sensationalized like we see on TV. Firefighters don't go out in a blaze of glory. Firefighters die on hospice beds from occupational diseases, and most times, they don't manifest themselves to the end of retirement. So I think it's really important, we thank you for the support that we've had in protective clothing, and medical screenings, and training, and processes we've been in place to protect our firefighters now, but it's equally as important that we look after these firefighters into retirement. I think if we'll do that and put some focus on that, it will help some retention issues that we're seeing now. And this time, I want to ask Chief Dove to come up and talk about his operations.
Good evening, council. My name is Kevin Dove, I'm the operations chief. I don't have as much sunshine as Chief Hill just did, but we'll see if we can go through it. So for twenty twenty-two and operations, our total calls were twenty-seven thousand six hundred and forty-seven, and that's up twelve hundred and thirty-three from twenty twenty-one. The lion's share of that was made up of medical responses, vehicle accidents, entrapments, extrications, things like that. Our response times stayed firm. Something to note, we record and report our response times in the ninetieth percentile, which means ninety percent of the time. So to summarize this slide, ninety percent of the time last year, from the time you picked up the phone to call nine one one, we were standing beside you mitigating your emergency in seven minutes and eight seconds. All right, fires for twenty twenty-two. If you'll look, our total fire responses were up significantly, but don't fret about that, I can explain it, and actually, we're kind of excited about it. If you look, our total structure fires were down by five, and everything else stayed pretty close, except for our civilian fire injuries, which were down by eleven. So we're happy with that. We attribute that to our community risk reduction efforts, and we'll continue to try to bring that down even further, along with our firefighter injuries and our civilian fire fatalities. All right, so to explain the previous slide, as Chief mentioned, we changed record management systems, and we also changed how we record some incidents. So before twenty twenty-two, if your fire alarm went off, smoke detector, or whatever, that's how we recorded it. No matter if you burnt the toast in the oven, burnt popcorn in the microwave, your daughter took too long of a shower and set the smoke detector off in the hallway, it was all fire alarm. So if you look at the bottom of this slide, the numbers are fairly consistent with the call increase, it's the same, but if you look at the cooking fires confined, they've gone up significantly. So that gives us a two-pronged approach to some education and mitigation strategies. First, with cooking fires. Now, if you burn a bag of popcorn in the microwave, we code it as a cooking fire, because that's what it was. So then we can look deeper into that, find out, was it in apartments? Was it in college dormitories? Was it in single-family dwellings? Was it a pot on the stove? Was it socio-economic related? Was it age-related? So we can dig deeper, develop education strategies, mitigation strategies, and go after that to try to reduce those. And on the same token, fire alarms, the majority of them are nuisance alarms, so why is that? Is the smoke detector mounted in the wrong place, close to the shower, so every time you open the bathroom door, it goes off? Is it too close to the kitchen? Are there enough smoke detectors? So then, we drill into that. If we notice we're going to the same residence two or three times, we reach out, we try to develop strategies, because like anything else, if you hear the fire alarm or the smoke alarm go off two or three times, you become less sensitive to it, so then when there is an incident, you're not paying attention, and it causes bigger problems. So even though the numbers look different, we're actually excited, we're digging deeper, we're going after education and mitigation. All right, EMS and rescue, which is the lion's share of our responses. As Chief said, our overdoses increased by almost double. The number of times we gave naloxone or Narcan went up, and our cardiac arrests went up. They are related. We know this is a big issue. We know there's nothing we can fix immediately, so we've got three strategies we're working on. One is the hands-only CPR, which we're doubling down on. The second is a program with Cumberland County, the hospital system, and actually Duke, to work through our organization to identify defibrillators in buildings and actually put those in the CAD. So if you're walking down the sidewalk and you witness a cardiac arrest in front of one-two-three Main Street, you call nine one one and say, hey, this guy just fell out in front of one-two-three Main Street. The dispatcher can look on the notes and say, hey, in the lobby of that building, there's a defibrillator. Send somebody to go get it. And also, we've partnered with our police officers and our police department, and some of our defibrillators that we replaced on a grant that are still serviceable, we're transferring to them to put in their vehicles, so we can increase the rapid accessibility to defibrillators. So even though we can't fix the problem, we're doing everything we can offensively to mitigate the problem. Hazardous materials response stayed fairly close. Our natural gas releases did decline as our technology contractors are moving through the city and finishing up their work. So some facts for the operations this year. Our average daily call volume was seventy-five point seven-five calls a day. Our busiest station was Station Five on Boone Trail Extension. Our busiest hour of the day was six P M. Our busiest day of the week was Saturday. Busiest month was July, and the busiest day of the year was September thirtieth, and I'm pretty sure that was the day the remnants of the hurricane that got Florida came through. And with that, I believe I'm finished up, so I'll turn it over to Chief Willett.
Good evening. I'm Ronnie Willett, I'm the Deputy Chief of Human Resources and Training. So the current state of our department, we are off our three hundred fifty-one full-time employees. Currently, at the time this slide was put together, we had twelve vacancies. We've just received a few more resignations. I believe we're up to fourteen vacancies as we speak. Last year, in two thousand twenty-two, we got to enjoy a part-time fire inspector position that was grant-funded. The grant period did close, and that position is no longer with us. However, Chief Alvarez will go over some of the benefits that we've received as an organization and as a city as a result of our ability to have that position temporarily. Last year, we had fifty-six separations. That is a banner year for us. That represents about sixteen percent of our department. Within one year, that was separated for one reason or another. And we also hired forty new firefighters to facilitate the staffing for the head count. If you bring your attention to the pie chart to the right of the screen, this kind of gives you an idea of why firefighters were separating from the organization. As you can see, thirty percent of the firefighters in our department left for other departments. That's a big percentage. Leaving the fire service completely, twenty-eight percent, so that's also another big percentage. We attribute this to our recruitment strategies, including underrepresented populations who may not have considered the fire service as a traditional path for a career. So they're not familiar with it, they come in, they try it out, they realize maybe it's not for them, and they move on to other things. That's just one example of what might fit in that category. And of course, you can see retirements, terminations, and other reasons are also included as well. The part that should be alarming is the thirty percent of individuals that we are spending our time and effort to train leaving for other departments. If you'll pay attention to the chart to the left, you've seen this data before. I presented this to you last year. That was the rate of, annual rate of attrition compared to the rate of tenure last year. And you can see that we were anticipating a convergence. Little did we know how much it would converge, those two lines, this year. The chart to the right in two thousand twenty-two, this compares that same data representative for this year, and as you can see, our annual rate of attrition has increased significantly to fourteen point six. That's huge. What this is representative of is we are losing people earlier in their careers, which means we do not have the benefit of their experience. We have a younger staff, a more inexperienced staff overall, and as you can see, the rate of attrition, as Chief Hill mentioned, we are losing firefighters faster than we can replace them. This should be a significant concern. However, we are making efforts on the recruitment side of the house. These trends here that you're seeing are the diversity, diversity recruitment efforts, and we are having some success here. And so as you can see, compared to last year, we are still trending upwards. Our diversity recruitment efforts are up to forty percent as of last year, and our percentage of minority firefighters on the department is up to twenty-two percent. This is a significant increase over the last five years since we've changed our marketing and recruitment strategies. So we are showing some good success here. Some of the training highlights. This slide right here, I want you to interpret this slide as this is why our firefighters are so valuable to other organizations. They are highly certified, they are highly trained, they are highly competent, and sought after. A hundred and sixteen thousand hours of training went into the members of our department last year. Nineteen new firefighters were completely certified to NORCO standards, NFA thousand and one. Ninety-two EMT certifications and recertifications took place. And of course, the technical training. Our firefighters also carry all hazards certifications to include technical rescue, driver qualifications, and hazardous materials technicians. Those are all advanced certifications. And you can see that the annual training per firefighter for our staff is up to three hundred and thirty-eight for last year. That's a significant amount of commitment. We also like to celebrate our individuals when we get an opportunity. As you can see, we have several advancements and promotions took place last calendar year. Thirty-eight individuals took the benefit of our career development plan, which we're pretty proud of. We've had several promotions to include fourteen lieutenants, eleven fire captains, one battalion chief, and we've had eleven service retirements. If we have to have fifty-six firefighters separate, I'd like that number to say fifty-six. Unfortunately, we're not there yet. And we've also give out, take time to recognize, our highest achievers, and that's kind of hard to do when you have a high achieving department. Still, we recognize that some people stand taller. We've given out two Golds Life Safety Saving Awards, two Silver Life Saving Awards, ten unit citations, and five of the year awards. And those of the year awards represent fire officers, firefighters, rescue technicians, hazardous materials technicians, and community risk reduction efforts. And those individuals are recognized for their efforts last year. And I'll turn the rest of the time over to Chief Alvarez.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'm Deputy Chief Alvarez, Deputy Chief over Community Preparedness, which is made up of the Fire Marshal's Office, the Emergency Management Office, as well as the Security Office. So in twenty twenty-two, we started seeing an increase towards our pre-COVID levels of community outreach. This includes initiative of the hands-only CPR you've heard so much about. If you or civic group or community watch group or any group whatsoever would like for us to come out and teach hands-only CPR, it's about thirty minutes to give this instruction, they can be reached at nine one zero four three three one seven three zero. Again, that number's nine one zero four three three one seven three zero. Feel free to give our office a call, and we'll schedule something for you. On this slide towards the bottom, you'll see that we facilitated two CERT academies in twenty twenty-two. That's coming out of COVID. We graduated nearly sixty local teenagers in that program, with one of those teens going on to receive the Presidential Volunteerism Award with over a hundred hours of community service in our community. So that has to be applauded. You'd be happy to hear that we will be hosting another summer camp, a teen summer camp. That's for rising ninth graders through twelfth grade. Tenant dates are June twelfth to the sixteenth. Again, that's June twelfth to the sixteenth, and eight to five. The cost of this program is their time, one hundred percent free. For further information, feel free to reach out to katefiercert, C-E-R-T, at gmail dot com. Again, that's katefiercert at gmail dot com. Our next slide is the Fire Prevention Code and Code Enforcement. You've heard mention before, we were lucky enough to receive a grant-funded, part-time fire inspector for twenty twenty-two. That fire inspector contributed to seven hundred plus inspections in our community, generating over fifty thousand dollars in revenue. On the, you'll see that number in fire inspections completed under twenty twenty-two. Right below that, you'll see fire code violations discovered. You'd be happy to hear that number start to trend downwards. That's due in part to fire inspectors developing those relationships with our community and our business owners and our managers within their respective zones, kind of just using that strategy to mitigate anything before the inspection. We want to make sure those businesses are safe all the time. The next slide is what we're finding in those businesses. This chart right here illustrates, I guess, the top five code violations. We're looking at exploring mitigation options and methods to reduce the overall violations that we're finding. Two in particular that are paying real close attention is the fire protection systems and the fire extinguisher testing and maintenance. We're trying to strategize on how we can get improved compliance on those two areas. Next slide is our emergency management. We've been pretty busy in twenty twenty-two. We have been spared in twenty twenty-two from any severe weather. We heard mention about storms Nicole and Ian that paid us a visit. Thankfully, there was no severe damage when they came through. In twenty twenty-two, we also started planning for our active shooter tabletop exercise we just concluded two weeks ago. Keep in mind, severe weather preparedness, I know we're on the tail end of February, but severe weather preparedness week starts March fifth, and that runs through the eleventh. Security. So our security team in our office continues to work with city departments and facilities in our great city to enhance and address any particular security needs, any concerns that employees may have. And hopefully, in a few weeks, we'll receive the after-action review report, and we are prepared to mitigate anything that comes out of that report, could develop a plan and put that plan into action. So with that, I'll turn over for any questions to Chief Hill. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. So I do have a couple of questions, Councilmember Behar Thompson, and then Ingram.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief, for your report tonight and all that you do for our city. I have three questions. I heard a little hinting on retention, and I was wanting to know what else could we do? What else could council do to help with retention? Is there anything that...
Well, one exercise we're going through right now, we've got a committee of our employees now. We've identified the group that's most acceptable to leave based on the patterns we've seen. We've got the group coming together now, fixing to issue the department-wide survey, and we're going to find out what's really important to our firefighters, what will, you know, keep you stay with the fire department. And once we have that list of what we really feel like will make a difference, we'll be turning those recommendations over to the city manager to incorporate in the budget. So a little premature to take exactly what we need, but we're working on it.
Okay. Thank you. We'd love to get that report. CPR, and I really do appreciate whenever you all started that program, that hands-free. I push it all the time. I assume some of my councilmembers do the same. How successful has that been? I know several of my community-to-watch groups have been involved with it, but how successful do you think we've been with pushing that and giving those classes?
I think initially, we put it out there, there was a flurry of folks who requested. We went out and acknowledged that, and I think now the onus is on us that we've got to actively, or proactively, get out and market the initiative in the community.
So we still need to do more.
We made it available, we've met the demand, now we've actually had to go push it.
Okay. Now, one last question, and help me, so that I say it correctly, defibrillators? Due to some things that had happened in our pro sports a few months ago, where do we stand with those machines, like at our schools where children are or during when we have sports activities? How ready or easy access is that for those particular games each evening, well, whenever they are, like Thursday and Friday?
Well, naturally, we have no control over that. What I have seen is most schools, they are present, most sports activities are on the sidelines. And keep in mind, defibrillators, like you would see out in the public, even like the ones that's out here in the lobby here, are different than the ones we have. Whereas the ones you see available to the public, really, they're completely automated. There's no buttons to push. You apply them, turn them on, and back away from it. But I do think there's a good dissemination of them amongst the school system, and especially in the sports activities.
So do we have a role within the city through the fire department? Do we play a role? Are you saying we don't?
No, sir. I do. I'm confident. I have to check with Chief Alvarez. In most of our rec centers, we have them installed.
Rec centers, okay. But the schools themselves, no?
Yeah. I can't speak to all of them. I know I have seen them at some schools, I've seen them at most sporting events at schools, but I've not been in, you know, in all the schools. So I can't answer that tonight, but I'll find out.
Yeah. I know that was, I said that because I wasn't sure if it was the city or county thing, but I'll, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Hill, I just want you to remind us, I believe at a previous council meeting, you gave us a percentage of how many firefighters received cancer after retirement. Can you elaborate to the audience for me, please?
Yes, sir. Occupational cancer is the number-one cause of line-of-duty death for firefighters. We're nine percent more likely to develop cancer, we're fourteen percent more likely to die of cancer, and about sixty-six percent of all firefighters will develop some type of cancer in retirement.
Now, with those stats, what would it take to get the officer death as a line-of-duty act?
Well, the state is recognizing, there's eleven specific cancers that if you're diagnosed with, or you pass away with, while your active duty is classified as a line-of-duty death. If it happens after you retired, there is no classification.
My next question was about the overdoses and the opioid pandemic that we're going through. I know that the county and the city has received funding for opioids. Are we, as a city, doing enough? And once we receive that, once the individual receives that treatment, do they go directly to the hospital, or are they revived and gone about their business? How's that process work?
Not a very simple answer. You know, like any community pandemic, whether it be mental health crisis or homelessness, it takes a collaborative community effort to make any real difference. We do participate in a couple of groups, Sea Fort, Cumberland, Fayetteville, Opioid Response Task Force is one of them, where stakeholders from all over the community come together, brainstorm ideas, and administer to separate programs. Ours has been focused mostly on response, naturally. I can tell you some things we've done, and our response model is the way that we administer Narcan is a little bit different than the way the public administers it. The majority of our patients are transported to the hospital, so they're at least entered into the system. Now, to tell you that we don't have, you know, repeat offenders will be a lot, I know we do have subsequent responses to the same patients over and over down the road, but at least in the method that we administer, it ensures that they have a better chance of at least getting into system and getting exposed to some help. Specifically, y'all took action tonight of budget, action on an item as part of the settlement, and I look forward to working with Chief Braden, some conversations that went on today to help develop a plan to make the best use of the remaining part of that settlement.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you, Chief Hill. Do you track, I know I saw the, where you tracked how many, which fire departments are busiest? Boom Trail is my neighborhood fire department. For example, there's a house that it seems like every week you all are responding to that home. Do you track instances like that and what the calls or why you're getting the call like that?
Yeah, we do. And it depends on the nature of the call. If it's a fire-related call, a fire alarm call, it may go something, our community risk reduction office goes out and meets with the homeowner. If it's on the medical side, more than likely, we'll recommend it over to the Cumberland County, to the hospital system. They have a community paramedic program that can actually go in and help with some services and reduce the number of calls.
Okay. And then, for recruitment, I know we recruit via, we're here locally, we recruit via, you know, college fairs, high school fairs. I know we have, you know, vehicle. Do we do, you know, off-the-beaten-path recruitment in like churches, rec center, YMCA-type of areas?
We do, and I got a guy, and he's going to tell you about some of his recruitment efforts.
Okay. Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Councilmember, thank you for your question. So to your question, yes, our recruitment officer has dedicated his efforts to specific targeted marketing within the city of Fayetteville. One of the first strategic changes we made, I think about five years ago, was if we wanted our fire department to look like Fayetteville, it makes sense to hire from Fayetteville. And so, he's out, and he's active in the public, having, getting more interactive with the public in general. He does hit the churches and the gyms and the historically black colleges, and of course, the community colleges in that area, and of course, areas surrounding Fayetteville. So he is highly active and mobile in our community.
Thank you. And my final question, so I'm just going to give an example, there's a bar, they learn to be in compliant, you know, through your standards. Do you create a plan and support them through the plan to become compliant?
I have a hard time understanding compliant with the fire code?
So, yes, yes. So if there is an inspection done, and they've not met the code, do you support them, kind of walking them through how they need to get up to code?
Yes, ma'am. I think that's one thing that Chief Alvarez hinted on a little bit, with the reduction that we saw in the fire code violations, is actually inspectors are now assigned their own districts, and they build these relationships with the building owners and help them successfully get through the codes so they can operate their business.
Okay. And I'm sorry, the Narcan, do we have, do we track if our firefighters are becoming exposed to maybe a drug when trying to administer Narcan?
We're very cognizant of that, it's a very serious issue for that, and we do, I mean, host regular training on that. To my knowledge, we've not had any firefighters exposed yet, but it's definitely a concern of ours.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to make a motion to receive the report.
Thank you, Councilmember Ingram. Sir? All right. This is motion by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Councilmember Thompson to receive the firefighter's report. Any discussion on the motion?
Thank you for all you do.
All right. Did you have everyone voted? Okay. All right. Most carries unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Keep up the good work. Chief Braden, how are you, sir?
All right, sir. How are you tonight? Thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. Tonight's report is a point-in-time reference and review of the year two thousand and twenty-two. Tonight, we will discuss the calendar year from January through December for events citywide concerning the police department. Tonight, I will have the assistance of the command staff to present. Assistant Chief Ramirez will discuss field operations that include crime stats, what patrol and investigations are doing to have a positive impact on crime numbers within our community. Major Joyce will discuss major projects, how they have impacted crime in two thousand and twenty-two, excuse me. And Assistant Chief Nolett will discuss operations support services and the multiple community engagement events that we've participated in in the past year. Like I said, included, we'll have crime statistics, crime trend analysis, crime fighting strategies, and our community engagement processes. Want to start off this report with a peer-city comparison. If you take a look, it was a four-year cumulative totals for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one. The peer cities included in this were Raleigh, Durham, Greensboro, and Winston-Salem. I believe that this peer-city comparison gives us, shows us what the trend lines were for the past four years, leading into two thousand and twenty-two, and some of the expectations we had going into that year. As we see homicides, rape, robbery, burglary, and motor vehicle theft are all things of great concern coming into the year two thousand and twenty-two, and I think they're a good gauge of the perceptions of crime within our community. As we know, we closed out two thousand and twenty-one, I believe it was forty-eight total murders, and we'll talk about this moving forward, but there's a slight decrease in homicide for the year two thousand and twenty-two. I think it's important to take a look at the trend lines. So some of our peer cities that we are comparing to, they are larger in population, so I expect that the green trend line would be above what the city of Fayetteville has. But as you see, for instances such as homicide, burglary, motor vehicle theft, the trend lines tend to show what is happening, not just in the city of Fayetteville, but it's something that's reflective of our community as a whole in our peer cities across the state of North Carolina. So, like I said, we're going to start off with our Field Operations Bureau. We'll go over the crime numbers and crime stats with Assistant Chief Ramirez.
Good evening, Chief Ramirez.
Good evening. Hello. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Robert Ramirez, the Assistant Chief over the Field Operations Bureau. That's a staff of over three hundred people that actually have patrol and investigations. And I'll be, like the chief said, giving you a point-in-time numbers for two thousand and twenty-two when it comes to our crime citywide. Right? So here we see the numbers, of course. Unfortunately, we see a little red there with slight increases in our crimes against persons and property with a total increase of almost ten percent for the year of two thousand and twenty-two. But on the bottom, you can see all that green means that the officers, the fine officers of the department are working diligently and tirelessly to do as many citywide arrests as possible to try to reduce, you know, the violent crime in our city. With twenty-five percent increase in felony arrest, eighteen percent misdemeanors. In this slide, we actually have a breakdown of those, we call Part One crimes. See, our homicides had an over eight percent reduction as compared to two thousand and twenty-one. When it comes to rape, we, you know, we just flatline on that one side, same. As you can tell, when it comes to aggravated assault and all the crimes, you know, it had a total of a little bit over, almost up six percent. Overall, for the year two thousand and twenty-two, the total of persons offenses were up slightly by just two percent for the year. The big decrease there, you know, for us, of course, every life saved is a big one, so, you know, almost over eight percent in homicide, that's definitely a good number for us. And then, we will further break down the actual deaths when it comes to what we work as a city, as a department. The bottom numbers, you can see the total deaths, the homicide unit touches all five-hundred-and-three incidents that came in. Out of those, forty-four homicides, fifty-seven overdoses, which I know the fire earlier spoke about, that number of calls is still pretty high for the city, but we've seen a reduction, actually, in the efforts out there with Narcan and the lock zone of the fire department, EMS, paramedics, and ourselves. Our suicide, you know, that's always a good number to see, a little low there, and coming into March, that's where suicide awareness month starts, I mean, in March, with a lot of local entities participating in that kind of message. And of course, like I said, even the natural deaths and accidental, our homicide detectives, by minimum, the sergeant reviews those reports and ensures that those natural and accidental deaths are not suspicious, especially when they are actually not attended. This slide here is the homicide analysis that further breaks down the demographics of our suspects and our victims, and even the possible motives of our homicides that we had in two thousand and twenty-two. I'll let you take a look at that for a few seconds, again, the demographics of our suspects, and then the bottom of our victims. Unfortunately, those numbers are the numbers. And the motives, the ones with the asterisks, like gang-related, as was the one with argument, there's multiple victims and offenders in those categories. As a matter of, like, there were more than one or two victims of homicide with that category. You see our domestic violence, it's always pretty much carrying our numbers for homicide. When it comes to that category, we've definitely started a lot of different initiatives in two thousand and twenty-two, and definitely now in two thousand and twenty-three, when it comes to having officers attend more, more training, in-service training, which is what we call it when we do it internally, as well externally with our domestic, our partners in domestic violence, such as the Phoenix Center and others. So we've actually started a lot of initiatives to try to reduce that, that method of, or that motive, I'm saying, of having to become victim of homicide. Aggravated assaults, and also goes along with domestic violence data. Again, you know, this is a time, you know, a time and point, data collector for the year of two thousand and twenty-two, there shows our aggravated assaults, misdemeanors were leading, actually, we dropped in felony aggravated assaults. Our domestic violence, unfortunately, you know, we saw those numbers increase, hence, while we had those nine homicides related to domestic violence. And again, we are definitely taking a lot of steps to educate our department, as well as the public with as much information as we can to try to reduce violent domestic calls from service. That might turn out to be homicide in the future, unfortunately. Then we move to crimes against property, that's the other category that we report. As you can see here, all those numbers are slightly higher, the eighteen percent, fifteen percent for larceny, motor vehicle thefts. All these were like, again, for two thousand and twenty-two. We've done many initiatives when it comes to increasing patrols, and the neighborhoods are plagued with these burglaries or these motor vehicle thefts. The robbery category only went up slightly, only three, which is great for us, because, you know, robbery is usually a crime of violence where weapons are used, so we only saw a slight increase in that. And the burglary number also, it's all business and residential, it's all in one group under And unfortunately, you know, when it comes to, we can't have enough PSAs or, you know, or messages to the public about, you know, keep your vehicle secured, and definitely keep them secure if you have a handgun in your vehicle or any kind of weapon. If you can see by these slides here, where how many vehicles were either... where, how many vehicles were either left unsecured or even unknown. You combine those two, as other people say, I don't know if I locked it or not, but here we are, you know, with, you know, pushing nine, over 900 such reports where handguns and rifles were stolen. Again, we actually have put out a couple PSAs and public announcements to ensure that we actually deliver that message. Even our new crux movie to educate kids about gun violence, gang and gun violence, it shows where, you know, not securing your firearm properly ends up in the wrong hands. And as you all know, ladies and gentlemen, we have a, a good partnership with our federal agencies. We have a lot of task force officers, we call them TFOs, task force officers, with the DEA, FBI, ATF, and the U.S. Marshals. These resources that we have with, I mean, these partnerships assist us in, in actually, you know, ridding the, the city of violent criminals. And the last, in the third quarter of last year, we actually reported 13 individuals were fairly sentenced. Thirty-one indictments are actually still pending, and over $430,000 were seized that were involved in criminal activity. And, you know, the one that's closer to me is that 33 firearms, 33 firearms might, you know, seized, seized, taken off the streets, that's a big one, because those are force multipliers there. Every gun, you know, can have an unfortunate body behind it, if we leave it on the street. And of course, we continue to work with our U.S. Attorney, Michael Easley, when it comes to an initiative that he has called the VCAP, On In Crime Action Plan, under the PSN, Project Safe Neighborhoods. These are more numbers now, when it comes to productivity by our narcotics unit, when it comes to where they actually seized, in compare, in comparing it to 2021, shows how proactive, how busy they were in 2022. As you can see there, cocaine, almost 70,000 grams compared to 2021, at, you know, right under 26, and meth speaks for itself. So, as you can tell, you know, we even did a, a, you know, couple PSAs about that. Meth, you know, we knew it was coming years back, and now it's definitely here with that many grams. That's like the new cocaine, for the most part, when addition to. And we have now fentanyl, which you know, that's, that's a big killer there. As you can see with the asterisk on the side, 1,000 grams of that could be responsible for causes over 500,000 deaths. So you just, you do the, the finger math on that when it comes to how many lives that could have ended. And the gun seized, always, it's always good to have a lot of gun seizures, 22 guns, I mean, 62 guns in 2022. But overall, on the bottom, as you can see, we had over 1,300 weapons seized. Yes, 351 of those were from the gun buyback program, but still puts us way over 2021 seizure totals at over 950 weapons seized of our streets. And that's my portion. Just now, I will go to Major Joyce.
Major.
Evening, Council. Mr. Mayor. My name is Todd Joyce, Major, and I currently serve as the Chief of Staff for the department. So when we talk about the license plate reader technology, this began not completely all in 20, and all of 2022, it began a little bit later and during that first quarter. And when we look at the last, those last months, it resulted in over 600 offenses of misdemeanor and felonies combined with that technology. We recently installed the remaining license plate readers in our community, and once they have power to them, all of them will be operational. You can see that we recovered over 100 vehicles, and those were vehicles that were stolen. Vehicles seized, those are 32, and you talk about that, those are vehicles that could have fled from an officer during a traffic stop. They were able to get that license plate, and were able to track that vehicle down later on to where it was able to be seized. And when you talk about missing persons who were located, those can be individuals in our aging community who may suffer from some type of cognitive impairment issue, and it allows to be able to put those license plates into the technology to where we can hopefully get the safe return of that person. You know, Chief Ramirez just talked about the narcotics seizures, but we also see what the license plate reader technology was able to assist those officers with seizing and also currency. And another big one was 29 weapons were recovered as a result of that. We'll talk about our FUSIS technology, and what FUSIS allows us to do, it allows us to combine private and public video streams into that single feed. So essentially, those individuals are giving us permission to have access to their cameras that go into FUSIS One. And as you can see, of course, in there, it allows them to upload that video or anything that's of evidentiary value. And we can talk about like our neighborhood residential camera program, and when, when that's up and running, these individuals can allow us to access, to put that into a registry. So for example, if Mayor Coleman and I are investigating a crime, and we say Hay Street is a residential area, before, we would have to go and knock on a door, see if they have a residential camera there to say, hey, can you have any access or something that we might be able to see. If we have individuals who will go into the registry, that will then plot that on a map, where we automatically know that we can go to 467 and 433 Hay Street to be able to look at those type of cameras and see if those individuals will allow us access to that. Right now, we have over 36 Donner sites that are contributing video to us, and the branding of the program will be rolling out this spring as we continue to work with FUSIS One. We'll go to our Office of Professional Standards and Internal Affairs. And when we look at use of forces, I know that number jumps greatly when you look at use of force, but as we talked about during that third quarter, in incorporating pointing of a weapons where that was not incorporated during 2021, those are incorporated now in 2022. And in the next slide, you'll, you'll be able to see that to, to where that balances out. Our departmental investigations were down a little bit. Citizen complaints, again, you know, we always want to be transparent with our community and investigate any incident in which a citizen makes that complaint. And then also, this, this time, we have added the compliments, where individuals call in to explain what an officer did for them and how they helped them and did a great job. This is our breakdown of the type of force and our demographics of the force used. I know that's a lot of information in that table, but this is something that is included in the Internal Affairs Unit Annual Report that will be released a little bit later this year, and it's also published. When you look down at the pointing of a weapon, in 2021, there were 22 incidents of that. So when you add that to that 38, that's, that's where we are with that 60 number comparative to the 72 total for 2022. The firearm discharges, that is five. Those were included, two officer-involved shootings, and also three K9s that were shot. We'll talk about our staffing. When we, at the end of December, we were only 25 officers short on the department. A lot of great efforts by the recruiting staff with the incentives that senior management and council allowed the department to be able to have to recruit a lot of officers, you know, officers who are here now from Puerto Rico. We just had two academies who graduated in January and February of this year. They started back in July and August of last year, so of course, they're, they're in their training phase right now. And in this photo right here, this is part of our 30 by 30 initiative, to whereas a department made a commitment, by the year 2030, we want to see 30% of our staff to be female officers. And the department hovers right now between 21 to 22%. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Assistant Chief Nolett.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, good evening. Like the fire department, we're here to bring some sunshine. So, I'm not going to bore you by reading every one of these numbers, but I'll introduce myself. I'm Assistant Chief Jim Nolett. I oversee the Specialized Service Bureau as I have done for the last several years. Part of that is traffic and traffic evaluation and the analytics associated with traffic stops. You'll see here that in 2021, 2022, there was one reduction in number of crashes, but we saved three lives based on the number of people who fall victim to traffic fatality. Still, unfortunately, speed and motorcycles appear to be the driving factors as it relates to traffic fatalities in the city of Fayetteville. As we continue to enforce these traffic laws, that brings us to our next slide, which is the number of citations and the warning citations issued within the city of Fayetteville for the year 2022. You'll see here, very quick, I think Chief Ramirez called it finger math. It was roughly 32,000 traffic stops associated with citations and warning citations. That's a lot. That's up from the previous year. But more importantly, we're going where you, as the council, the community, and we see the need to be. You'll see on this next map, this next slide here, this is what's called a heat map. This basically says, that red area in the center, center, if you look that circle, that's always the center of the city, that's the mall. If you look at that circle, Sky Bow Road, that road that runs north to south, that's All-American. We're on All-American, Sky Bow Road, Morgantown Road, Clifftail Road, McPherson Church Road, basically the heavy business, heavy traveled area to enforce the, the laws of, of traffic violations, which include car clubs and all the other stuff that we've been contacted by this council throughout the year. This is just the citations, but as we go into the warning tickets or the warning citations, you'll notice that the circles are much smaller. There's obviously less numbers, there's only 9,000 versus the 23,000 that we discussed earlier. But you'll notice, we're still in the same area, we're at that Morgantown-Clifftail Road intersection, we're down on Owen Drive, Massey Hill area, we're actually up at Santa Fe Drive, and we're in some of the neighborhoods where we're noticing the concerns that you're having as it relates to speed and those concerns that you're contacting us about. So this is just a visual representation of the trap, the numbers that we, that I just spoke about two or three slides ago. So as we go into initiatives that started this year as it relates to Specialized Service Bureau, Ms. Husk, as well as her staff, as relates to Elizabeth Marcus and Deanna Braggs, there were two people that were brought on. We noticed under Chief Hawkins that we were not evaluating and keeping numbers as it associated with our mental health contacts and our homeless contacts, homelessness contacts. But what you see here on the left hand, from August to December, that's 697 contacts that Elizabeth Marcus has had as the, as a mental health coordinator within our organization. Now, that's, doesn't seem like a lot, but that's 140 calls, not 911 calls, but that's calls to her for assistance as it relates to mental health and repeat calls of offense for mental health-related calls. Now, on the homeless contact, Deanna Braggs, who's, who's essentially become a rock star in this field, that's 1,467 calls since June to December. That's 210 a month that she receives. That's, again, not 911 calls, that's not calls into, hey, we have somebody panhandling on the intersection of Owen and 301. This is to her, to seek assistance, to get into shelters, to get, get assistance as it relates to homelessness. So we talked about calls for service, and we talked about 911 calls. In 2022, we received over 4,000 less calls for service dispatched through our 911 center. That's, that's actually, we found out today, a national trend. Ms. Lisa Reed, who actually runs our, who is our 911 Communications Manager and does an amazing job managing that staff, informed us today that that's actually not only a state, but also a national trend of less 911 calls coming in. So that's something we're going to continue to monitor for our call center as it relates to staffing, but also what, what, what are the needs of the community that are coming into us. One of the things that we do keep track of, just like the fire department, we don't do 90%, we actually do 100%. All of our calls, we hold up to a 10-minute standard. And if you look at the calls received to first dispatched for priority ones, which are life harm, we're at a time period from first call to on scene in eight minutes and 54 seconds. That's greatly under the 10-minute require, or not requirement, but the 10 minutes kind of standard that's set nationally. And then priority two calls, we're at a, we're at roughly about a nine minute and 83, 8.83 seconds, I guess, time period as it relates to our response to that scene. So the partnership with the community has always been the core of what we've done with the Fayetteville Police Department. And at that, as many of you work and go to the Community Watch meetings, you become familiar with our crime prevention specialists and the amazing job that they do coordinating and being part of that. If you look at our Community Watch Groups, our virtual Community Watch Groups, our homeowners associations, and our Business Watch Groups, that's 165 individual groups that they help be that liaison for the police department and as, as well as for you, where we have contacts with them and they're that, that, they're on the spot when needed. I mean, they're an amazing group of people. But there, these community groups are our eyes and ears within the community, telling us what we need and what they need from us. This here, we talked earlier about recruiting and retention. We also take pride in the fact of lateral swearing-ins. You'll notice in this picture here in the bottom left-hand corner, the very handsome young man with the beard there, that, that is Robert Ramirez Jr. He is, he is second generation. But we're also proud of the fact that Officer Majors, who's the other gentleman, actually resigned from the department and then came back to the department because he, he longed for the work that we did here. So those are two, two of our lateral ceremonies that we had in this last quarter. National Faith in Blue is held in October of each year. This year, we partnered with Massey Hill. We did a community cleanup in Massey Hill, which was a great event. We also did Coffee with a Cop, where you can see, these are just some of the photos that we did there, but that's usually held in the beginning of October, October 7th through the 10th. And I know that Chief Braden and the Fayetteville Police Chaplains are already working on next year's program, so we look forward to that. Also, during the fourth quarter, we had two movie nights. We, Chief Hawkins wanted to, we had to postpone one, so we made it up in the fourth quarter. The photos you see here are from the event we had at J.D. Fuller Rexon. On October 14th, we showed Sonic the Hedgehog Two, I believe. It was so good the first time, they made a second one. And then the, the other one we had was at Kingdom Impact on Murkison Road, which was well-attended by the community there. Simon Temple, AME Zion Church, one of, one of the core events that Chief Hawkins held throughout the year was the Quarterly Faith Forum. This one here was a little bit different. We, instead of holding it in the middle of the morning or in the day, we actually held this at night, and this was well-attended during this time period. We spoke about domestic violence, as you saw the homicide numbers and the concerns that we have. This was, this was really starting the conversation with the community about domestic violence, as well as holiday safety. PAL Youth Boxing, you know that the PAL, our PAL amateur boxing has had great success over the years. It's really spearheaded by retired Sergeant Greg Johnson, and as well as our PAL program. But we have boxes as far away from Florida, come up to Seabrook Park and, and Smith Rec Center, and actually had a day of boxing there. And it was actually very well-attended and very well-celebrated, a lot of fun. This was the second one we had. We'll probably be doing another one in the, in the upcoming year. And then finally, as we close out, just as the fire department does, we celebrate the work that our offices and, and employees do each every year. As you can see here, these are some of the photographs from our awards ceremony that we held on in November. But we did celebrate the Officer of the Year, which is brand-new grandpa Jeff Locklear, who is the sergeant over our homicide unit, has really spearheaded the work that they do there, and amazing talent within our organization. But he was the Fayetteville Police Department Officer of the Year for 2022, so if you see him, please congratulate him. I am going to turn this back over to Chief Braden for any questions. Thank you.
So, real quick follow-up to some of the things that were presented tonight. I'd really like to highlight the LPR Success License Plate Reader Program. As was mentioned, this isn't a full year into that program, and over 600 felony arrests associated to that program within a matter of about, what, eight to 10 months? And we're, and we're still not fully complete installing the west side of the city. So I'm really looking forward to what would happen in 2023 when we get a full year's worth of data with our LPR program. Moving forward, some of the things that we took notice of in 2022 is a, a, a heavy increase in crimes committed by juveniles. So as
Yes, sir.
So as we look forward, what we want to do is, is limited information we can get and present on that, but we want to track some of that data. See how, we noticed a great increase in larceny in motor vehicles. We'd really like to track that and see what percentage of that crime is committed by juvenile offenders. I think that will help drive some programs and some ideas about what we can do to help reduce those crimes moving forward, if we have a true and accurate account of what amount of crime our juvenile offenders are responsible for. And lastly, if we go back to the homicide slides, I know there were some questions about homicides. We did notice that, that domestic violence accounted for just under a quarter of our homicides last year. Even before, as the Assistant Chief over Field Operations, I began to take a look at, knowing that trend was on the rise, taking a look at, at the number of homicides we had and, and doing background research on each one of those. We went back and we took a look at each of those nine homicides. How many times have we been to that house prior to the actual homicide? What we found is, is that there were several of them that we had multiple encounters throughout the year. Once we found that out, we went back and we took a look at what was our response during those initial encounters? Was there something that we could have done better? Was there something that we should have done that maybe would have prevented that actual homicide from occurring? Based on that, Major Berg did that research for me, came back. We came up with a plan that, that was time for us to revisit how we, as, as a department, handle domestic violence. domestic violence. She has structured a retraining of our officers that is being rolled out. We actively participate. I've met with Judge King, and we're going to actively participate in the Caitlin's Courage, which is now the Seigence Program. And we formulated response so we can ensure that if there is a violation of domestic violence laws, you know, where a victim is being harassed, that we go out there and we make those appropriate arrests. So we are dealing with some of the major issues I would see associated across the board for 2022. Like I said at the very beginning of the presentation, remember this is a point in time marker. You know, there's things that we look forward to changing and potentially, you know, adjusting in our future quarterly reports.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chief. Do have several questions. Councilmember Ingram Thompson-Hare and Benevente in that order.
Thank you, and I believe this might be your first time presenting as chief.
As chief, correct.
Yeah, so congratulations and welcome to your new position. Real quick, you said LPR program.
License Plate Readers.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, so let me start here. Residential camera program, so I'm very familiar with that. There was a shooting that happened at the intersection of my dad's house at one time, and as you stated, they stated, the police came and knocked on our door and said, hey, can we get your footage? And we handed it over to them, no problem, and case was resolved within days. So I'm asking, if we have a residential camera program where they, you don't have to necessarily knock on the door and people can upload at will, do we really need ShotSpotter?
So I would say this about the residential camera program, that will work in conjunction with the FUSIS program that we have. It'll help map out throughout the city where we have cameras and still allow officers to go and see. We, you know, we're not just going to take footage from someone, you know, we're going to ask for that participation. I think, again, they're two different tools. So the cameras will provide a certain amount of information, you know, whether what was caught on video or what was heard by that video. And ShotSpotter is designed to do something else. I think, you know, we're in the planning phases of the implementation of ShotSpotter at this time. Hopefully, within the next few months, we'll be able to give you some live data on what the capabilities of the system are. As we continue to move forward in 2022, we have, and begin to get that feedback from ShotSpotter, I'm sure that in the future quarterly reports, we'll be giving you some of the success stories or what the program offers to help aid us in our investigation of shots fired calls.
Okay, and then this is kind of going into your 30, 60, 90 plan, and also for the listening audience, it is published online. So looking at the report, we saw that there were 60, 60 use of force, total 60 use of force. And I want to know, like, as a department, do, do, when it hits a certain number, do you hit, hey, this is a red flag, what's going on? I know you're always tracking that number, but does the department have a, like a standard of, or threshold that, hey, this needs to be checked into because this number is getting high as it relates to use of force?
So we do have multiple layers of checks and balances throughout the department. Naturally, the first line, supervision, the supervisors that deal with those officers on a day-to-day basis, they know what those officers have been involved in over the past year. Hopefully, those supervisors are training those officers, sending them to schools, knowing what their shortcomings are, knowing what the training they need as they move forward in their careers. In addition to that, we have an early warning system or alert system that if an officer's involved in more than, more than two uses of force within a 12, consecutive 12-month period, it automatically generates an alert, which causes that supervisor to go back and take a look at the previous two uses of force to ensure that no bad patterns of behavior are being generated by that officer. Then on top of that, you know, there are three bureaus within our police department, okay? There are three patrol districts. There are 431 sworn full-time allocations to our department. You know, when you add all those together, the potential for use of force out there on a day-to-day basis with the sheer number of police officers we have patrolling on a regular basis, it's not, I don't know if 40 is the number that causes you concern, but to me, we're monitoring those on a day-to-day basis to ensure that the officer's actions in those situations are reasonable and justified.
Okay, lastly, so the number of, I think, suspects, the highest number were black males, and then on the end, victims, the number was blackmail is the highest number. I've been in court all day just observing.
Talking about the homicide?
Yes, and I recognize that a lot of, a lot of cases, which also turned into, whether start off as domestic, turned into criminal, criminal cases. What are, what are some innovative measures or ways that we are prepared to move forward as it relates to not just domestic and criminal, but also the homicides? I see, I see that something in the, in the 30, 60, 90 day plan, but I don't really see anything that calls out what needs to be called out, which are the homicides, which are, you know, domestic violence. And I would like to, like, really try to go into that. And honest, I think the one I'm asking is rip the Band-Aid off. I don't, I, what I read is a good marketing plan, which is no problem, but I really do want to know homicides, domestic violence, like, what are, what is the effort going to be moving forward?
So like I said, taking a look at the nine domestic-related homicides this past year, we did go back and take a look at how many times did we have involvement with subjects more than once prior to that homicide. Based on those things, there was nothing identified that was missed during those initial contacts. But part of the training that we're given right now is we're actually telling officers, these are the assets and resources that are out there for these victims. Something we've actually added to that is a follow-up from a victim's advocate through the Phoenix Center, either a day between 24 and 48 hours after that initial call. Sometimes, you know, domestic violence victims, they may not want to, or they may be too scared to follow through with anything that night. So that 24-hour, 48-hour, let me get my senses about me, let me figure out what my plan is, maybe if I'm contacted again at that point in time, taking that victim-centered approach, they may be wanting to speak with somebody and actually be more apt to receive those resources and things that are offered through our community. So that is something we're doing specifically for the domestic violence. Taking a look at some of the crimes of violence, the interpersonal disputes that end up in a shooting that results in a homicide, we're taking proactive measures to reduce the amount of retaliatory violence for things like that. The Buns Road homicide, we were back over there within a week executing a search warrant, and we took an additional six guns out of a house that less than seven days ago, we had a shooting and a homicide where all guns were removed from that house. Being able to follow up and ensure that they don't have the opportunity to go take retaliatory violence, or we don't have a spot that everyone knows to go there to retaliate because the police are still watching, monitoring, and understanding what's going on, I think that's going to be key moving forward. Like I said, I talked a little bit about juvenile crime, understanding what specific age groups of juveniles are out there and what crimes are they committing, okay? When we talk about crime, we talk about a slippery slope. What starts off as shoplifting may end up with being grand larceny, which may be larceny of motor vehicle, which may be a carjacking. How, at what point is the police department intervening in that juvenile's activities to have a positive impact that keeps them from falling further down that slippery slope? Those are things we'll take a look at. Again, with juvenile laws, there's, we're limited in some of the responses, how we can interact with those juveniles, but I think truly understanding what age groups are most vulnerable, understanding and coordinating, when you talk about the 30, 60, 90 day plan, having those conversations in the community. What is the target age group? What is going to actually appeal to those? I know Mayor Colvin talked about, hey, having the lingo. You know, what, how do we get kids in that we need to have those conversations with? You know, movie night, we talked about Sonic the Hedgehog 2. Is that going to get the 14, 15-year-old kid that's out there stealing cars off the street to listen and be offered those things? Those are things I'm willing to talk about in the community and see what engagement pieces we can use to pull them in.
Okay, and City Manager Hewitt, I just, I don't know how this process would work, but at the state, there's been a, been an effort or conversation, and I don't, I've lost track of where it is now, about guns and legislation surrounding guns and, and what you need to have a gun. And I want, I would like to know, of course, as councilmembers, we are able to go to Raleigh, and we are able to lobby, but do you allow your chief of police to kind of have some type of, kind of input in those type of legislative efforts in terms of saying how this will impact our community?
As it relates to the changes that were made for handguns, the chief did briefly address some of that, I think, on a recent radio show. That is something I know that council members have spoken to me that you would like to take up about the cost of gun ownership, responsible gun ownership, background checks, insurance requirements, and I think there may be actually a council member request or two that's forthcoming about it. But specifically for the chief, one of the things that he and I want to be very careful about is getting ahead of council on some of those policy issues. And while he has an opinion based upon his almost 25, 30 years of experience, as do his assistant chiefs as well, we just want to be very mindful that we don't jump into the political and cultural wars without necessarily having the data to back up. And so some of the data that he's shown tonight about the number of guns which are unsecured, I think he feels very comfortable speaking about that.
Right.
But about the changes that were made at the state about background checks for handguns, he and I have not had that discussion.
All right, I think I was mostly talking about just the overall gun conversation. Thank you, thank you, Chief.
That's right.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, first I'm going to start off with what you finished with, and that was about relationships with community. For those who don't know, I have a chat and chew in District 6 the first Tuesday of every month at the IHOP, where I get community leaders to come in and talk about the issues that they have with their community, whether it's police, whether it's fire department, whether it's management, whatever the case may be. And what they asked was for that, the police department, which is Cross Creek, and Captain Strappay and Lieutenant Hutchinson, if I'm not mistaken, have their contact information. So if there's something to occur in their neighborhoods, the police department know who to contact with. Most of these neighborhoods have community watches, most of them have cameras. If the police department needs to access that information, they know individuals they can contact with. But Chief, first let me commend you and your staff on what you have captured during these recent weeks, as far as the drugs, the guns, and the paraphernalia that you and your narcotic staff has seized. It is remarkable, especially looking at this data that you presented during this presentation. Second, let me talk about the, I guess it was a graduation ceremony that you invited me to, where I believe we had 19 officers and nine of them was from Puerto Rico that graduated from the police department. I was honored to be there, and I was honored to see the smile on those parents' faces as those police officers got sworn in. But my first question would be is, are we recruiting from within? I noticed that the fire department talked about recruiting from here in Fayetteville. Do we have a strong recruiting force here in Fayetteville to recruit individuals from Fayetteville to be in the police department that can give you more information about the neighborhoods that they live in, no matter what the district may be?
So again, part of that 30, 60, 90 day plan is having crucial conversations internally and externally. Recruitment and retention has been a topic of discussion that we've had many, many times. And we did discuss, we have concentrated a lot of our recruitment efforts outside of the city of Fayetteville over the past year. As we got internally within our group, we do have people that have, weren't eligible to be recruited a few years ago that have turned to that age. So we are looking at, yes, we have a BLAT program at Fayetteville Technical Community College. We do have a criminal justice program at FSU, at Methodist, at a lot of regional colleges within our city limits. So yes, we are looking to focus some of our recruitment efforts back into locally and trying to build that pride, that community pride of, I don't know if you've taken a look at our Facebook page, we've highlighted several officers for Black History Month. Why do they want to become a police officer? Pride in their community appears to be a common theme if you actually take a look at those. How do we harness and harvest that here within our own community? I think we'll see some of the fruits of those labors as our recruiting team goes back out into the city limits here and focuses on our local community colleges, our local schools, and our local talent.
And in addition to that as well, Chief, and others would tell you, we have a referral program as well, and so it is available to all city employees and particularly folks at the police department, that if they're aware of someone who has an interest and we actually hire them, we actually give you a referral bonus. But to say we are recruiting everywhere and anywhere, we really are, but much more could be done on the college campuses, which is something that, as the chief mentioned, he'll be focusing on as well.
Well, Mr. Manager and Chief, one of the reasons why I asked that question, because I believe in more communication with the communities will help in that cause and not less, that's why I think it's important to me and some of my community leaders in District 6 that I can only reach out and touch, and maybe some of my other colleagues are doing the same thing, is to build that rapport with the police department so that we can get more recruitment, so we can get more people, more diversity in the police department.
And I'll mention this, I'll quickly go over my 30, 60, 90 day plan with council after this, but one of those, those community engagement pieces is that open house where people can come into the Cross Creek District, I'm sure where your district falls, Mr. Thompson, Councilman Thompson, where they can see the actual captain of that district, the detectives that work cases there, be interested in seeing, you know, the equipment, the police cars, and have a place that, you know, if they truly want to be mentored and are seeking a path in the law enforcement profession, they can meet someone that could help guide them along on that journey.
I just have one more follow-up question, Chief.
All right.
And once again, thank you for that three-hour ride-along that we did a couple of weeks ago. Three hours, he had me out there for, oh, my goodness.
He got tired, he was a little late, like 9 o'clock.
It was late, yes. My question is, are you going to change the schedule of the police, of your police force? I know they were rotating schedules, and the reason I'm asking that question is I'm looking for communities that have the same officers in their community at the same day during the same time period so they can get to know those officers. Can you elaborate on that for me a little bit?
Sure, you know, the schedule for the Fayetteville Police Department has been a point in contention over several years. We've had several schedules, you know, when staffing got at its worst, we actually had to remove to a 12-hour schedule because that maximized our ability to put manpower on the road. As we move forward, you know, what are the benefits of having that 12-hour schedule? What are the benefits of having a rotating shift? What are the benefits of having a permanent shift? Those are going to be topics, topics of discussion as we have our internal conversations on what will improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the Fayetteville Police Department. You know, there's certain benefits for every option that we look out, look at, whether it's permanent shifts, rotating shifts, 12-hour shifts, 10-hour shifts, and we have to look to see what is going to benefit us the most, not just the officers, okay? What is going to benefit them, what schedule do they want, but what is going to maximize the manpower output that we have available to put on the road and answer calls for service on a day-to-day basis. Again, I'm not prepared to sit here and say, yes, I'm moving to this shift right here because this is going to be the best. I'd be naive to think that I'll have all the best ideas. It's time for me to reach out, have those conversations. What would people be willing to work? How do I manage the expectation of the staff that I have, okay? While accomplishing the goal I have of maximizing efficiency and effectiveness on our ability to go out there and do police work. So those are conversations that will be had, okay? And ultimately, at the end of the day, as the chief of police, I'm going to have to make a decision. It probably won't be popular with everyone that's on the police department, but it's a decision I have to make about what is going to best serve the city of Fayetteville.
Thank you, Chief. Great job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Hare.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Chief, a few questions here. For one thing, I am, I was happy to hear that there's going to be some continued domestic violent education. I think that's very, very important for our officers to have. Tell me how this works. I heard a couple of names that, that are supporting the domestic calls, the mental health calls. It was stated by one of the assistants tonight that the mental health have received 144 calls from August to December. And my question is, does that go through 911 for them to get that call? Or is it a different number?
So the actual way that that process works is, there may be a follow-up by our mental health person, Ms. Marcus, Elizabeth Marcus. If there are officers request that, they go out there and they see, hey, there's nothing really criminal going on here. This appears to be something more than we have the capability of serving that individual today. So Ms. Marcus may get a call from the individual officer as they determine what the best course of action is by handling that 911 call for service. But as she is But as she has gained, as she has become more familiar with the community, there's individuals that know they can call her. You know, some of our service providers, our nonprofits, they're aware of the work that she's doing, and she may get a call from them to see what she can offer in order to make referrals to what would best serve those individuals that are out there that they're encountering on a day-to-day basis. So to answer your question, yes, it can come from, the officer respond, and they may call Ms. Marcus to see what she has available or what she can offer to rectify the situation that they're dealing with instead of having to take someone to jail. Or based on her interactions in the community, she's now built a reputation and aim for herself where people are contacting her personally.
Okay.
Am I correct in that, Ms. Husk?
She's here?
Ms. Husk is her supervisor, she actually reports, Elizabeth Marcus reports to her.
Okay. So ring, 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 phone is ringing, hey, my child is acting up, my son is acting, my husband is acting up, boom, 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 and a sworn officer is sent to that call. Kind of how it goes. Tell me once again how that-
So we've got to be careful on that. You know, just because someone's acting up doesn't mean that they suffer from some mental illness that needs to be addressed. Sometimes we got kids that just act up. You know, we have to deal with those accordingly. I think the police officers are dispatched to those calls, they go out there, they make an evaluation of the scene and what needs to happen, and it's just like anything else. If you know, if it's a DSS referral, guess what? We refer DSS. We not contact, notify them. If there's some injuries, guess what? We contact paramedics, request them to come out and provide the services they would. So from that initial 911 call, once the officers have the ability to secure a scene, figure out what's going on, conduct an evaluation, then we make the proper referrals to whoever it is that would be better served to handle that actual call for service.
Okay. My final question, I think it's the FUSA technology?
FUSIS technology.
Okay. How is that related, or did you say, is that, because I didn't hear the word, ring doorbells? So is that the same process? I mean, how does that work as far as that being connected? Because we hear a lot about that at our community watch meetings.
So we presented, I think it was part of the violent crime response last year, and if we need to, we can do another presentation on what FUSIS is. As we start to incorporate FUSIS, what it does allows us to actually map out all the surveillance cameras that occur, that exist within our community. So I know that if the police department has its core existing cameras that we know and we access on a day-to-day basis. But if someone chooses, they can give the police department access to their cameras through the FUSIS software, which allows us to tap in and see those. Now, the levels of integration that we are, is dependent on the user. If someone wants to grant us access, they can do that. If someone wants to give us limited access to say, hey, I don't want you looking around my house, but know that I got a camera and I will upload stuff if you guys request it. So it's just a matter of networking, knowing what cameras are out there, what the capabilities those cameras are, and not having to sit there and do a neighborhood canvas every time we have a crime that goes down. We can pull up those mapping systems that are within FUSIS. We can send the requests, ask people to share, and do things of that nature with slim lines, a lot of the investigative processes that we currently have to go through.
So you get that information out, like, for example, let's just use my street, for example, there's probably a ring doorbell every other house from one inner seat or way to the other.
So just for edification of what that, we're probably not going to want access to your ring doorbell. We want you to keep that, but we want to know that you have one so that if we do have something on your street, we would know to go to you, knock on your door, say, Councilman Hare, we know you have a doorbell camera, would you be willing to show us what happened last night, or look for this on your doorbell? And if possible, share that with us if there's anything of evidentiary value-
Yeah, but what my question is, and thank you, I understand that, but my question is, so each person on that street would be registered or asked to register?
If they chose to.
So you'll know where it is?
If they, it's not a mandatory registry, but as we go into an area, yes, we will reach out to residents and have a questionnaire. And Major Joyce, if you can fill us in a little more, because I know he's been dealing directly with FUSIS on this.
Yeah, because I get this question all the time.
And we've been meeting with FUSIS a lot, and they're helping to design a website that'll be just for Fayetteville. So when we roll it out and we'll work with Markham during the process of that, that'll be a landing page and we'll introduce that, you know, at community watch groups, things of that nature. But when you talk about like Ring cameras and Arlo cameras, theirs are all cloud-based, so they're proprietary, so we wouldn't have, you know, real-time access to that, just like Chief Braden said. We would then be able to map it out, as like I was saying earlier, we don't have to go looking for cameras-
You know where they are.
-at every house because they've said, hey, we'll be a part of the registry-
All right, okay.
But we still have to go and ask for that access.
I like that, I like that. Okay, all right. Thanks, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Benavente.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Chief Braden, you described the Phoenix Center follow-up when it relates to issues of domestic violence and that officers are being armed with additional details to resource folks. When did you guys begin utilizing that strategy?
So I was promoted to Assistant Chief in May, and I think that's one of the first things with Major Burke that we sat down and taking a look at. We were halfway through the year, we realized that the trend for the domestic violence homicides was trending up at that point in time. We started taking a look at those probably late summer, early fall, and then we started looking at, okay, what is our current training exists, you know? Then we went back and took several other, not just the homicides, but we took a good deep dive look, a hard look at how we handled just calls for service for domestic violence incidents, maybe that haven't ended up in a homicide yet. So as we gathered intel, we went back and did our research, then we add our, basically we use, you know, if I talk about 30, 60, 90 tonight, it's the SAR model, scan, analyze, respond, and assess. Yes, we responded with, this is our strategic plan on what we want to do. We want to arm our officers with education on resources and things that we can provide. We want to make sure that we're reaching out a couple days after, you know, in case the situation has changed, and now they do want to press charges, they do want to pursue, seeking to move themselves, remove themselves from the situation. So grand total of probably about six months, we've been gathering data, formulating a plan, and we're in the implementation process right now.
Those nine domestic violence homicides, were they gun-related?
I'd have to look on that, I don't have that information readily available on this.
What are some of the barriers that you feel like law enforcement has that limit the ways you can assist DV victims in particular, whether they're fearful of criminal charges against a spouse that they're dependent on, that prevents them from wanting to necessarily go through with criminal charges? Could you share any sort of ways that you found yourself having to lean on community support for that reason?
To lean on community support? I think we have quite, we have resources within our community if that's the route that we need to go with a domestic violence victim. If, you know, the scenario is bad enough, we do have safeties built into the law where we can arrest someone for a 50B violation even if the victim doesn't, at that point in time, want to press charges. Again, if we treat domestic violence from a victim-centered approach, we need to take a look at what does the victim want to do in certain situations. But it's incumbent on us sometimes to step in, intervene, to make sure that violence doesn't escalate, elevate to the point where we are having nine domestic violence-related homicides within a year.
Looks like the data for this past year was over 100 guns a month were getting stolen. Because the owner of the weapon is technically a victim of a crime, what can you do really to impact the rate of unsecured weapons being stolen beyond the advertising campaigns?
Just educate people, go out there and support some of our gun locks, our crime prevention people. They provide gun locks at many of the events that we go out and support now. But yes, it is an education campaign that we primarily resort to.
I appreciate the breakdown that you included for the use of force. Looking at, I guess, Slide 16, that large table that you had provided, does anything stand out to you as concerning and that you want to do differently? Obviously, you weren't in the Chief's role in the year of 2022, but looking at this, are there some numbers here that you hope to tackle?
So remember, this is a data set. It doesn't explain the full story. Each use of force is a unique event and incident, and we have to discuss the factors and uniqueness of each of those incidents to determine whether they were reasonable and justified. I think that it's hard to tell simply based on a table what the story is that's associated to those numbers. So yes, are there things that we would be interested in delving further into? Yes. But we do that on a singular basis as we investigate each and every one of those as a use of force incident throughout the year as they occur. Again, like I said, we have some built-in alert systems that if we have a single officer that has used force three times in a span of 12 months, that alerts us to go back and say, hey, stop, take a look. This guy's used force three times in the past 12 months. Go back and review those first two to make sure that we're not establishing any patterns of behavior.
I'm glad that you guys have that procedure in place. I think, I'm hoping that the fact that black citizens are four ti, almost four times more likely to have to be, have force use against them than white residents despite our population being equal, 40%, 40%, I think that's still a large factor that ought to be considered as a whole as well. But I take your point. Do you mind heading over to the citations slide? I guess that's Slide number 19.
Just to address the 40%, 40%, you know, some great discussion that we've had, you know, a lot of the trainings that we've been going to as a police department that talk about bias-based policing and things like that, you know, one of the first things we're taught is that equal opportunity doesn't guarantee equal outcomes. If 40 and 40 is the percentage breakdown of the population, that doesn't mean we're going to have 40% use of force for one, 40% use of force for the other. That's what I was saying about the uniqueness of each scenario has to be taken into consideration to find out whether that particular instance was reasonable and justified.
Yeah, I'll have to ask you more about what you mean by that at another time because you're saying that it's, you can find individual justification for one population being-
No, I said each individual incident is either justified or not, and it contributes to the whole.
Right. Looking at the, excuse me, the citations slide, Slide 19, you were here in 2012 under Chief Medlock, correct?
Correct.
Are you familiar, or do you recall some of the policies that were put in place to address the issue of quote-unquote "driving while black" in the community at the time?
Some of the policies that were put into place?
To address that issue, at the time-
There was a temporary moratorium on consent searches, I believe, is that what you're speaking of?
I'm trying to ask you if you recall from your time what you felt like worked or whether those are some policies that you want to bring back.
So as we take a look at, you know, we respond accordingly to the complaints that we receive, you know, weekly, I get feedback from community watch groups. You know, I get quite a few council requests for traffic control, complaints about violations that are occurring in neighborhoods and throughout our community. We respond accordingly. We do traffic stops based on reasonable suspicion or probable cause. So as we review, the supervisors review what their officers are out there doing on a regular basis. If those traffic stops are rooted within probable cause and reasonable suspicion, that's the driving force for the violations that we see out there. You know, right now, we take a look at what is important to our citizens, what is important to our leaders, and where they send and ask us to go and what enforcement actions they ask us to take.
I guess maybe I'm not asking my question the right way. Back in 2012, the city of Fayetteville was making national news because we were stopping black drivers at twice the rate of white drivers, to the point that Chief Medlock decided, hey, we've got to change our policies because regardless of the individual assessment of the individual traffic stop, these overall numbers are very alarming. Do you agree that it's alarming when we stop black drivers at twice the rate of white drivers?
I have to, I have to go back to what I said originally. As we take a look, each individual traffic stop deserves its own look to see whether it was valid based on reasonable suspicion or probable cause. If I'm looking towards the end goal of what the outcomes are going to be in the final, at the end, when everything's tallied together, then I'm inputting things into that equation that would make the stops that I'm doing illegal or unconstitutional. So as I look, we make sure that our, all the enforcement actions we take are rooted in constitutionality, legal, probable cause, and reasonable suspicion.
You said that during the use of force, if someone does more than two in a row, you'll start to look back and see if there's any trends. Is there a similar process for traffic stops as well? Where after a certain amount of-
Councilmember Benavente, let's see if we can bring this on in. You've got a list of closure, uh, questions here.
Okay, all right. You mentioned that whenever a use of force occurs, you will review, it'll trigger a review if they engage in that more than so many times.
Every time, every time a use of force happens, there is an internal investigation that, and a review of that use of force.
I thought you said that after, that there was more than two, that there's some kind of review that's-
There's a separate alert that tells us to go back and relook at the previous two, which we already looked at, just to make sure there's no commonalities or patterns of behavior that are being established.
Are there, with that in mind, are there any current triggers or procedures to find trends in traffic stops amongst the officers?
Well, if I can jump in, make sure I understand the question as well. Chief, it might be instructed to say, what is the basis of a legal stop?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, every traffic stop has to be rooted or based upon reasonable suspicion, a set of our, a set of facts or circumstances that a reasonable trained police, that a cause of reasonable or trained police officer believe a crime has been, is being, or will be committed. Or probable cause, which is the higher level, which is a set of facts or circumstances so obvious that the average person would be able to sit there and say that a crime has been, is being, or will be committed. So I think a good explanation of that further would be when Councilman Thompson rode me the other night, I said, hey, if you see a vehicle you want to pull over, let me know. And I think he picked out one with headlights out. That was so obvious that even Councilman Thompson with no police training could sit there and say, there's a violation that we could stop. Now, there's things that we talked about, that we looked at, that he didn't see in cars or vehicles or things like that. Things such as bolos that we actively look for, whether we had a robbery suspect and we're looking for a yellow Mustang. As I look at yellow Mustangs, I may develop what we call reasonable suspicion, may not be the level of probable cause, but based on the information that I'm privy to as a police officer, those are the things that I use to formulate a decision whether to stop that car or not.
Excuse me, what's a bolo?
Beyond the lookout for, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chief Braden.
And so, Chief, using that example, using that example, if you were passing by a motorist and you observed that that motorist was a male or female or a particular race, that would be an illegal stop to stop them on their pretext.
Yes. And that was one of the things I asked Councilman Thompson the other night. Soon as he picked out that car, I was like, what stood out to you? He said the headlights out. I said, is there anything else that you can tell me about that car? He's like, no, all I can tell you is that, what color was the car? I don't know. How fast was it going? I don't know. So they're all things that, as you're seeing and taking information in, you know, that wasn't high on his list of, hey, this is what I'm looking for.
But to your point, Councilmember Benavente, and I'm going to be finished in a minute, Mayor, that's just something that we do review a great deal, and it is something that the Chief, when he was hired, and he and I spoke about this, all the candidates, that we cannot go back to where we were. And so we want to be, and be very vigilant. And so as we go forward and look at the number of traffic stops that we do, the reasons for those traffic stops, the locations of those traffic stops, we invite your questions. We invite the community's questions because we cannot do this if we don't have full trust of the community and we are open to the, which was something that for the folks who were here, there was, appeared to be some reluctance on members of the police department at that time, and in manager's office and others, about what was the real issue that was at hand. It was a great, very difficult time for our community. But this manager, this chief, and this police department, this council, this city attorney, this staff, we're not going back. And so again, we welcome your questions, and it is something that the same ride-along that we did with the Chief, we would encourage all the other council members to have that as well so that you can see and talk to a real police officer as you see what they're seeing when they're out doing their patrol as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Chief, I know you've been up here for a while, I just got two quick questions, really. One, I think, first of all, let me commend you for the job in a short period of time. You and I have been in meetings, it was a concern of mine, you know, because I receive, and I'm sure many council members do, a lot of complaints about speeding ATV's on the street. You know, I saw a guy standing on his motorcycle riding through, coming down Rowan Street today, the bridge, I mean, I don't know how he did it, it needs to be on television somewhere. But it's not an appropriate place for the city streets, and so I get a lot of those type of concerns, just for regular people who want to go, go to work and home every day and not be ran off the road in an unsafe way. And so the concern was that police stops, you know, certainly I don't support any kind of targeting, and I think that's wrong, and I think we've grown since 2012, but stops that went to the extreme of the other end, a few, 6, 12, 18, 24 months ago when we met, that they were down significantly versus where they were. And I see that, you know, I see you're a lot more visible, which hopefully will make people slow down, save lives, and I see that it is yielding- people slow down, save lives, and I see that it is yielding guns and drugs and some bad things, getting them off our streets. So, I do appreciate that. So, there is, got to be a reasonable balance that follows the law and not target people, so I think you can do that. I do think you guys have a tough job, because as a black male, I'm sitting here looking now at thirty-one black male suspects and twenty-five black male victims. Black, black.
In relation to homicides?
Yeah. That's a factor that I think we've got to talk about a little bit more as a community. So, what I want to talk to you about, I know the answer to this is not necessarily through the police, only the community investment, the programs that we need. I'm hoping, Council, as we start allocating resources, that we be very intentional on putting the resources where the need is, because there is an imbalance between victim and perpetrator here that affects the black race particularly. So, some of these community programs, how are you working with that on a proactive basis to kind of?
So, I really, to answer that question, I really think going like, back to what we talked about with domestic violence, sometimes, you know, we got to wait for that victim or that individual to come around and say, "Hey, this is what's really going to work for me." I talk about, you know, as I give my thirty, sixty, ninety day plan, you know, as a young officer, I was very naive, I would go and I'd tell people what needed to happen in order to solve the problem that night. You know, as I became more mature as a police officer, I learned to ask this question, "What would you like to see happen tonight?" Because what I thought needed to happen wasn't always what was going to be best for the victim, wasn't always going to be what was best for the situation. So, I think truly, you know, it's not a police answer, it's an overall societal answer of, "This is what we have to do to influence this age group, this demographic, this actual crime." There's a whole gamut of things that have to be taken into consideration, and the police can't do it alone.
So, the one thing I don't see on here statistically is the age. Do you have a breakdown of the age of victims and perpetrators?
So, at the end of the actual presentation, you know, as we move forward, this is the same data sets that we've used for the past several years. We're going to meet collectively as a command staff and decide what needs to be documented and how it needs to be presented to narrate the story that we want to tell as far as, yes, I think that as we break it down, you will see that people under the age of eighteen have a heavy influence on our larceny motor vehicle problem.
Well, that, and I would just like to, it'd be interesting to see the age of these suspects, victims.
But we're going to actually take a look at that so we can give you a more interactive, understand truly what's going on, and what age groups, what individuals we need to reach out to.
And the last question, as you look at the blue column, possible motives, arguments, ongoing fight disputes, to me, and maybe the gang-related piece, kind of tie together, in my opinion.
So, if you look, and the actual asterisks, gang-related argument, it may be a combination of any of those. If you look, the numbers may or may not add up to the exact number of homicides that we had, forty-four total. Okay, some of these incidents may have more than one actual positive, possible motive, okay? If I'm in a gang, and I'm in a rival gang, and me and you see each other out at the mall, we get in a fight, that's an argument and gang-related activity.
Gotcha.
Or if I'm robbing, you know, a robbery that's drug-related, but it's also gang-related, there are situations where it could have potentially more than one motive.
So, where I was going with that, and thank you for clarifying that, where I was going with that, I talked one time before to you guys, to the leadership over there, about what are we doing to intervene or to track online disputes? You know, they get on Instagram, and they go back and forth, and a lot of this stuff is there. Where, do we have any presence there with anybody that can interpret and speak that language to get in between that stuff before it turns into a gun shot, gun violence?
So, we investigate from a multitude of different angles. I can't say that, you know, I'm not going to, we're not the social media police, we're not going to get out and monitor to see who's arguing with who on there, but we will use social media as an investigative tool if that's the route it needs to go.
Gotcha, alright. That's it, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that we receive the Fayetteville Police Department, 2022, fourth quarter review.
Second?
Alright, most by Mayor Pro, Jennifer sent me a notice, I messed that up, it was supposed to be Councilmember Ingram, but the discussion went so long, I forgot about it, so I'm sorry about that. So, really, it was Councilmember Ingram's motion, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim, how about that?
Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Alright, Councilmember Benevente and then Ingram. There's two minutes on this.
Start a timer. I think everyone remembers in 2012 when the city of Fayetteville made national news because we were pulling over black drivers at a rate twice that of white drivers. City manager just said that we don't want to go back to where we were. The reality is that we pulled black drivers over in Fayetteville even worse so than we did in 2012, now ten years later. The data is out there, the SBI requires that every traffic stop has a report filed with it. So, we have the numbers, and we know for a fact that we're worse than we were in 2012. So, I can't accept that we don't want to go back to where we were when we're already worse than where we were. It's also concerning to me that, or rather, it's evidence of why we need to have an office of community safety. I think that Chief Braden ought to look at his department in the brightest light possible, and he ought to look at every single instance and every single officer on those individual merits, but somebody has to have a more objective view. Someone has to not be concerned necessarily with office politics or departmental politics, and they need to look at these numbers independently and say whether or not it is absolutely a problem that we over-police one community versus another. The only people that got bit by dogs were black men this last past year. Are we asking why that is that we only use canines in situations dealing with one population versus anyone else? These are highly critical questions that need to have answers, and we need Chief Braden and his officers pulling over speeders. We need Chief Braden working on law enforcement. We need an objective body, a department, an office of public safety to review this data and give us the real answers. Until then, I just, I just really am highly concerned with the fact that we all know the problem and that we're letting it continue. We all have been introduced to a solution, and we're ignoring it. So, I cannot wait for this city council to finally take action. I mean, I think Chief Hill said it earlier, leaders are judged by how they react to what they've learned. Everyone here has learned that there is a solution here, but we're failing to react. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ingram?
Yes, I'll just be very short. I'm glad that a colleague of mine mentioned that they took the opportunity to go on a ride-along, and they did three hours. I did a full twelve-hour shift ride-along, and I chose to do that because there were a lot of complaints at the time that I was getting about the twelve-hour shift. And I will say, well, and I think it's the lay of the land of my district, I was able to see it all, and I was able to see from a resident perspective, the officer perspective, a lot of things, and so I would like to not only challenge my colleagues, but also citizens and community leaders to reach out and see about taking, getting, you know, taking a ride-along, in addition to our Citizens Police Academy and the Sheriff's Academy as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, motion on the floor by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Dawkins. If we had discussion, council, look to you for action. Alright, most carries unanimous, thank you. Thank you, chief, thank you, officers, keep up the good work, gentlemen and ladies. Alright, moving to item nine point zero two, Public Works Commission, Appointment or Discussion. Council, you know, as you know, we have been statutorily assigned the duty of replacing or appointing PWC commission members. We've had this discussion and vote a number of times here in our meetings. As we go through tonight, we have the five applicants that had applied during the given time, and council has been working toward a consensus to support. So, tonight, brought this issue back, kind of wanted to have the discussion about the rules around maybe the voting process tonight. We've used in the past, it's worked well, which is a, kind of a runoff scenario. No Councilmember Benevente had mentioned that as well, referred back to when we did the District Three, that we'll go down the line, we'll name the applicants, the top vote-getters will move forward, and then for a final vote. I know there was some discussion around during the dinner meeting and previous about what happens in the event that we are not able to come to a consensus tonight. So, before we get into the process, kind of wanted to hear from you about that. You know, I'll say my piece, and then I'll recognize you accordingly. I think that we have to keep this and be intentional about fulfilling our duty, even though it's tough work. I think we have to stay committed to it, and I would hope that tonight, if a consensus is not reached, we will come back to the following council meeting until we can reach a consensus. But, would like to, as we go through it, if there are not enough vote-getters in this scenario to eliminate that from the conversation, as we move forward, trying to get to the top two, very similar to which we have primaries in the final general election. So, with that, go for any questions, comments. Councilmember Hondros and then Benevente.
Mr. Mayor, I was prepared to move to nominate Peter Stewart.
Okay, let me see, was it, did you have a question, Councilmember Benevente, or he's getting right to work? So, I guess he's-
Well, and I think that would be a very different process to nominate simply from the floor, so I guess I wanted to clarify what we all-
Well, he was one of the five, is he right?
That's right. Well, I guess it sounded like you were going to read names just in alphabetical order, one through five, or?
Well, either way, we have five people, and so, you know, I guess since Councilman Hondros is prepared to make a nomination, if there is a, we'll move on that, we'll go down to five. Let me get the correct pronunciations of the names. I should know them by heart by now, I know we have-
You have Christopher Davis, William Gothard, Joseph Hollacek, Theodore Mohn, and Peter Stewart.
Check and Stewart, alright. Alright, Councilmember Hondros has asked for nomination, Mr. Stewart, alright. So, council, what we'll do, Jen, you got iPads up and ready? Alright, alright. Council, look to you for action on Mr. Stewart. And some, Madam Clerk, you'll tally these, right?
A second?
Yeah, well, I was trying to see as we did the runoff process, were we going to do it in form of a formal motion initially? I think we're trying to establish now who has the support, but I guess we'll do it like that for confusion's sake. So, is a motion by Councilmember Hondros is there, second? Seconding by Councilmember Jensen. Alright, council, look to you for your votes.
Point of order, I'm so sorry, Mr. Mayor. If we're doing that by runoff, how many, how many, so just going to our appointments meeting that we just had, doesn't that give us each a certain amount of votes?
Uh, no.
I'm asking because of the process that we just went through, through our appointments committee and nominating, we, well, Mayor Pro, they know what I'm speaking of, we each had a certain amount of votes per, per person because of the amount of people.
Well, I see what you're saying.
And so, what I'm asking is-
So, I think what we can do is, we'll read the names, instead of doing it as a motion, we'll read the names, we'll count the number of votes.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, this is, you got a motion in the second?
Motion in the second, yes, sir, yeah.
But this isn't that-
This is not that correct, yeah. But, depending if this is a necessary conversation at the conclusion of it, Councilmember Ingram, because we're in the discussion phase of a motion with a second there, so we have to dispose of that one way or another, so then we'll come back to that. But, just to your point, I think what we've done in the past, and I think what you're describing is, names are read, you take votes, and she tallies the totals, but this is different. There's an actual nomination of Mr. Stewart by Councilmember Hondros, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Alright, look for you for your votes, y'all.
Mayor Colvin?
Yes?
Are we going to be going by now the runoff process where we name just every single name one by one, everyone gets one vote?
Yes, that's what we're going to do, sir.
Okay, very good.
But, we had a motion on the floor, so we'll head.
Yes, sir.
And for clarity, Madam Attorney, does that mean we all get a certain amount of votes per one? Okay, I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure, thank you.
So, we need to do hands if that's the case, but that's a little bit more challenging to figure that out. What are you saying when you say a certain number of votes? So, when you name the person, you'll vote for your particular person that you support, we'll total that? Yeah, okay. Alright, so we'll just start at the, start at the top, alphabetical order, so, alright. First person on the alphabetical order is Councilman Davis. Show of hands for Councilman Davis, those in favor of Councilman Davis. Clerk, this, one, two, three, four, okay? Alright, Councilman Ted Mohn, a former councilmember, Ted Mohn, alright, one. Councilmember, I mean, Mr. Gothard, Mr. Hollacek, four, five, and Mr. Stewart. Okay, so it moves forward to Mr., you said who did? We had, so we had a total of ten, we had a total of ten votes.
No, they voted for Peter Stewart.
That was a separate situation, apparently, and now we've just begun the process.
That was the motion that was disposed of. So, once that failed, eight to two, then we just went, and we had ten people vote, alright? So, now, we move forward, the top two vote-getters are Mr. Davis and Mr. Hollacek. Alright, Mr. Mohn and Mr. Gothard and Mr. Stewart were eliminated that round. Alright, starting at the top, those for Mr. Davis, show of hands, Christopher Davis. Alright, Mr. Hollacek. Alright, that's four, that's one, two, three, five. Alright, Councilmember, we only got nine votes, who are you voting for?
I'm voting for-
Alright, so we have five, five, alright.
Mr. Mayor, does that now mean that we are to-
Work our way through those two.
Okay, if it pleases the council, I would like to reconsider my vote.
Oh, Lord.
Okay.
I would like to change my vote, and I will support Councilmember Davis, so we can move this forward.
Alright.
Thank you.
Alright, looks like Mr. Davis is the appointee, the total is sixty-four, alright? Good work, council, congratulations to all the candidates, thank you forward, motion adjourned.